Engage with anything. I'm gonna leave this great opportunity. All of you can just sit there and wait until it's done. That's not gonna happen.
You hope it's...
And I have to work all, you know, in our 50s, so we'll have to find a way to manage it.
What side of the news?
Something I don't want.
Well, it's good that you have a good solid base to be able to do that.
Like going to a separate room?
They are.
Okay, they all wrap at the same time?
Nope, 10 minutes before that. So that's good. I came early, that's why issues only exist.
So yesterday, I was so attracted to them.
They gave me a class again in the spring. They've given me the same old lead class.
Beating the lens tomorrow.
Cornelius invited us just a day before. So very short notice, but I was going there anyway because I was...
I really want to stay and teach.
That was a really neat thing.
So I can, you know, back and forth, back and forth for whatever.
Mm-hmm.
It would've been nice.
I don't know.
To see other people there, but if they...
Yeah. You don't need to make all those decisions at once.
Exactly, exactly.
The kids organized it all.
Put it enough, but it's not too far off anymore.
I'm addressing the crowd and then separating people into groups.
Yeah.
Just kind of picking out, okay, what are your issues? And summarize, and then they're gonna summarize all those and bring them forth, yeah.
Hey Pete, you have question five. Great. Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. Joan, roll call please.
Director Hockert, here. Director Kelsenberg, here. Director Petrie, here. Director Portbenny, here. Director Thielander, here. Chair Sherman, here. You have a quorum. Thank you.
Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will make a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Can I get a second, please?
I'll second.
Great. Director Hockert with the second. All those in favor of approving tonight's agenda, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we have a small consent agenda. Joan, I don't know, are you gonna flash it on the screen or I can, I can read it too. It's only a couple items. So we have two items today. One is payment of invoices, January 21st, 2023 through February 10th, 2023. And item B is the partnership plan contract. I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda this evening. Can I get a second?
Second.
Director Petrie with the second. All those in favor of approving tonight's consent agenda, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, so this evening is a little bit different than our normal meetings. We are going to start interviews for the temporary appointment for the vacant position we have. This is just a temporary appointment until the community can have their voices heard again at the election box in November. So we have six candidates to hear from tonight. Every interview will be 30 minutes. And we will rotate asking questions. I'll probably end up doing the last couple, just the way it's, it's rolling. We will, and we'll say this again, but we have cards to warn our, our interviewees that there are 15 minutes left and when there's five minutes left, just so they can time the eight questions that we have for them this evening. So we can bring the first candidate in. So this is alphabetical order. We're starting with Bethany Cox. May I just be a minute? Yeah, that's fine. Welcome.
Hi, thank you.
So we're just gonna repeat for you what we kind of have said already, but we have eight questions this evening. You should have a copy of them.
Thank you, yes.
Yeah, and we're gonna rotate who asked the question, so we'll just go around the room.
Great.
And we have two time cards there, just to time you, because each minute, each interview is 30 minutes. So we can do the 15 minute and the five minute warning, just so you can pace yourself when answering the questions.
Sounds good. Thank you.
So I guess first, welcome, and we're gonna jump right into it.
Yeah.
Can you just please start by introducing yourself and share a little bit more about why you are seeking the position? Please feel free to include any qualifications and/or experiences you believe are helpful for us to make note of.
Great, thank you, Chair. So my name is Bethany Cox. I am a community member here in the Stillwater area. I'm the Director of Development, so I'm a fundraiser at the Wild Rivers Conservancy. We support the national park, that's the St. Croix River. I've been in that role for over three years now, and I'm just loving my work, being tied to the riverway, and the community has just been a joy. I also recently joined the Stillwater Sunrise Rotary Club, so service is in who I am. It's part of my blood. I also currently am serving on the City of Stillwater's Planning Commission. That's a mouthful. Prior to that, I was on the Library Board for several years. So we moved to the community late in 2017, and right in 2018, I joined the Library Board. So again, that whole service piece is just very important to me. I trained as a chiropractor, took quite a dramatic turn in fundraising after about 10 years in practice. But one of the things about kind of the two career paths that I've taken is that they're truly based on relationships. So getting to know people, being part of, you know, their decisions, and being, getting to know their families has just been such a joy. Joy for me. So both in running your own business and having a practice and in fundraising, time management has been wildly important. Then we added a couple kids on top of that, too. So for managing a full-time job, the children, and all of kind of the additional activities that we take on, being smart with my time has been something I've had to figure out. So the second piece is why I'm seeking this position. Thank you for the printout, by the way. I hope that my volunteer experience shows that I'm just committed to this community. So my husband and I moved from just St. Paul out to Stillwater because of the schools. We just kept hearing how great they were, and we are both public school kids ourselves. And so I want what's best for not just the students that we represent as families, but that the entire district represents. And so I think that I can be an asset in, in the school board for that reason. I don't come with any other agendas, other than just really wanting what's best for our students. I think it's important that when they graduate from high school, they are leaders, they can be successful, whether they choose to start a business, go to a trade school, maybe go to college, but that they can, they can hit the ground running, and that they have the success of the Stillwater School District behind them to keep them moving forward. And so again, kind of that relationship building piece about myself for my career, I think can be really beneficial and helpful as well on the school board.
And I should say, every director can introduce themselves really quickly before they read the question, and I did not do that. So I'm Allison Sherman, Board Chair, so nice to meet you.
You as well.
And then we'll turn it over to question two.
Good evening. Thank you for being here tonight. My name's Andrew Thielander. Question number two. From your perspective, what does the district do well, and in what areas could the district improve? Also, what is your vision for education in our community?
Absolutely, thank you, Andrew. My experience in the district is limited. I'm sure there's some people that are on the slate of interviewees today who have high schoolers that have graduated, and several of you have children that have graduated from the district as well. My daughter started in pre-K at Rutherford in 2018. The 18-19 school year, yes. So from my opinion, Rutherford and Stonebridge are amazing elementary schools. From the custodians keeping the schools clean and the kids healthy, to the cafeteria workers who have a smile on their face and remember my children's names. I've had the pleasure of interacting with Mr. Berg at Stonebridge, and he's a fantastic principal who works late hours. He's there late into the evenings when I'm picking up my kids from adventure club. His dedication to this school and to this district is amazing. I've also gotten to know Dr. Mike Funk. He is also a member of my Rotary Club, and I cannot tell you how impressed I am with him. His professionalism has just been amazing. And so from what I see, the district is doing things really, really well. I don't have some of the history and baggage I've heard of, you know, just to kind of name that. So I think what I then offer is a really fresh perspective, and I think that that can be beneficial. My vision for education in our community, Andrew, I think is, again, when it's my kids, when it's your kids, when it's students in our district, I want them to graduate from high school successfully, and I just want them to go out and do amazing things in the world. And for them, when they're doing that, to say, "I grew up in Stillwater, and I'm a public school kid," just like I say proudly now.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. So Bethany, welcome.
Thank you.
My name is Annie Portbenny, member of the board.
Thank you.
So I have question three for you.
Yes.
In governing a school district, there are multiple interests and perspectives to consider. Describe how you might approach complex decision-making as a board member.
Thank you. It's a really great question, and I think I will rely on my previous board experience in helping with this. At the library, we had really tough budgeting decisions to make as a board of directors in that role. The majority of the budget came from the City of Stillwater, and there were times when it just wasn't enough. And so we had to get really creative, whether it was partnering with the foundation, or partnering with businesses in the community, or volunteers, to really get all of the work done that the, the library staff envisioned, that the library needed to, to have and to be. So there are a lot of perspectives that come when you're sitting on a board, too. I'll rely on the Planning Commission for that. When someone comes in and they wanna build something at their house, holy cow, you wanna say yes, because they bought their house. But sometimes the rules really govern what we have to say. And so just like this board has a mission statement to guide the work, and all of the, the documents and the policies that you've recently updated to help you make those decisions, we need to hear people out. We need to listen truly, and then we need to, we need to make sometimes hard decisions. I do think that the school board has some great resources. Again, a mission statement, some policies that we can really rely on. But then there's things like pandemics that happen, and we have to figure out how to make things work. And I trust our community has elected intelligent people to be here. And so again, we all bring a perspective, and I think that you put smart people together in a room, and good things can come out of that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Hi, Bethany.
Hi.
I'm Bev Petrie, and I'm gonna be asking the fourth question. On a board of seven, each director brings a unique perspective to enrich discussions before a vote is cast. If you find yourself in disagreement with a board decision, how would you handle that situation?
Thank you. Disagreements happen, and I think some of the best discussions can come out of that. So I was on a board, again, I work for a nonprofit, so I manage our development committee at work. And I had a really tough decision, and I went to my committee and I said, "This is what we need to talk about next week. Please come prepared, I really could use your help." And so our board chair looks at me and he says, "Bethany, at the end..." So we're, we, the decision had been made, we're at the end, and he just looks at me and he says, "Can you please come to every meeting voting, 'Yes, we need to do this,' and you need to tell us why? And then we can vote and, and kind of argue against you, and we'll just have this really great discussion. And at the end of it, everyone will know what to do." And so I just sometimes think that if we can, if we can listen, truly listen, and hear each other, and again, kind of rely on some of those policies that we have to make these decisions, I think, I think great things can happen. I think it's when we talk over people, when we have kind of a preset decision in our mind and an agenda, that it's really hard to hear, and it's really hard to be swayed or to see things from a different perspective. And so I'm hopeful, from what I've seen when I watch your board meetings, that you listen to each other and you have good discussions. And I think it's fantastic. Thank you. Yeah.
Hello, Bethany, I'm Pete Kelsenberg, and here's my question. As a board member, parents, staff, and community members may approach you with specific issues such as maintenance concerns or an issue with a staff member. As a board member, how do you see your role in navigating issues such as that?
Thank you, Pete. I think some of these could be really challenging. As parents, we want what's best for our kids, so this is one I haven't had to deal with yet on the other boards that I've served on. I hope there's training, first of all, just say that.
There is.
That we can lean on, thank you. And as a board member, you ride this really interesting line, because you wanna be there in the community listening, from my experience on, again, the library and the Planning Commission. But you can't make a decision by yourself. And so there's, there's a, there's a dance, and I think I would like more training on some of that. I would love to meet with board members and get some advice for how they manage that, and, and, and listen. I think there's a time when we need to listen to parents and staff and community members, and then there's a time to say, "I hear you, but my other colleagues need to hear you as well. So how can we elevate this so that the whole board can be a part of this listening and help to, to resolve this?"
Thank you.
Yeah.
And now, I'll let, can you both, I know one of you will be reading the question, but could you just introduce yourself and then explain maybe your role on the board?
So I'm a student representative. We're both co-presidents of the Student Council at the high school. I'm Iliana Balak, and we're both seniors, by the way.
My name's Kira Jelinek.
Nice to meet you. Great, yeah. And they're asking the next question.
Fantastic.
Do you feel the district has any pressing facility needs? If so, what do you believe those needs to be, and how would you like the district to address them?
Thank you. My experience is limited, I'm gonna say that one again. Rutherford was a great school, laid out completely different from Stonebridge, and those are the two schools I've been in the most. I have been in our high school, please don't put me there in hall passing time. It's a, it's full. It's very full. So I, I was able to listen to the school board meeting when the demographer was here. There are some challenges coming, and so I think it'll be exciting to be a part of that and to make some really positive changes. So I think pressing facility could possibly be an eighth elementary school. Maybe a second high school at some point in time needs to happen, too. Our community's growing. Again, we moved here from St. Paul and further from that, but part of it was because the schools were so good. And I hope that that reputation continues, and more people wanna move here, so we will need more facilities kind of on top of that. Now, I do know that Stonebridge needs a little, they got some attention on their playground last summer. Amazing. I'm sure Rutherford is probably not far behind, so there's always something that's coming up. And as a board, I'm sure it's tricky to say, how do you prioritize that? The budget is limited, just like it was at the library, and how do you say that this is the program or this is the school that gets the money? I can only imagine that that's a difficult conversation and a, and a challenge to deal with. But I don't have a great answer for that one, if you'd like.
Thank you. I'm Katie Hockert, Board Director, and I have question number seven for you. The board makes many decisions. Take a minute and identify a past board action. Did you support or oppose the board's action and why?
Great. Dr. Funk's not here, so I kinda think I might brag on him for just a second. I know this board hired him, and I, hiring a director is not something I've been a part of. At the library, Mark Trundall was there before I came on board. But that's a, I'm sure it was a tough process, long, lots of discussions. But honestly, that's a board action that I'm so proud was made, because I think he's an amazing asset for our school district, for our teachers. I think he knows how to clearly run an organization. You know, you don't get Superintendent of the Year because you're kind of a slacker. Like you really have to prove that you're good. And so I'm just really impressed by the board's action with hiring of him, and I hope it's clear that I, you know, approve of that. The other, probably most recent thing that I've seen is policies. Oh, policy. It's not super fun and exciting, like it's not the sexy thing that people like to do on boards, but holy cow, is it necessary? Again, you need to have those in place so that you can fall back on them when tough decisions have to be made. And so again, board action to approve policy, pretty mundane, probably pretty boring, but at the end of the day, just a vital part of board governance. And so I think those are the two that I would, that I would mention.
Great. You are doing great on time.
I'm...
So you're doing great. We're already at our last question. Okay, so your final question is just to please offer any closing statement or thoughts, and also feel free to ask us any questions that you may have.
I do have a few questions, if that's okay.
No, and you have the time.
Thank you. The first one, and I know that there's training, but if there could, can you discuss maybe a little bit more what that training looks like? And Andrew, I know you're the newest board member, so have you been able to go through the training already?
Correct.
You can go ahead and speak to your training.
Yes, so the Minnesota School Board Association offers some comprehensive training around board basics, one-on-one, school finance. With my background in finance, I've learned that it's like drinking on a fire hose, because it's like a whole different language. So it's very humbling to essentially learn all of this. But, you know, obviously having, you know, Chair Sherman and the rest of the directors are great resources, you know, and Dr. Funk and the administration, and so it's just a matter of just learning and, you know, giving yourself some grace as you work through that process. But there are definitely resources, I think there's gonna be some additional onboarding and training opportunities coming up for future board development, so, so there is, it's there, it's, it's very good.
Yeah. There's kind of a phase one, phase two with MSBA, which is kind of the first thing you do. And then we do some ongoing workshops or different things like that, so. And then obviously leaning on exactly what Andrew said, leaning on your fellow board members, myself, Dr. Funk, and other administrative team members, so. And there are lots in the community, lots of building staff is always, you know, very welcoming, so. Yeah.
Yeah, something else to add. One other option is to be paired up with a mentor as well.
Oh, great.
If that's something that you would like to do. Some board members have chosen to do that, some haven't, so that's an option as well, if you kinda want to work more one-on-one with somebody to get some guidance.
Nice. I know Yasmin Robinson at the city calls before a planning commission. Do you have any questions? And it's just really helpful, because sometimes there's something really technical that like the staff needs to help with, and it can be a really big benefit to have their ear for just a couple minutes before, the week before, so thank you for that. Kind of a two-part question. What's been your favorite part of being on the board? Some of you are short timers, some of you've been here for a little longer, so what's, what's been one of your favorite parts?
Sure, I'll take one.
Sure.
So I'm the second newest to Andrew, so I'm just starting my second year. And so, yeah, you have the training, you have the, the support, it's, it's all out there if you want it, and they're glad to give it to you because they've been there. So as a boarder, I'm a Stillwater fan. I like to go to the games, I like to go to the concerts and whatnot. And as a board member, I'm welcome at all these things now, and I also have an, it, it makes me more interested now because it's, it's the thing I'm working for, and, and I get to see that and just think, hey, I am part of supporting that. And so you, you find yourself welcome wherever you go now, as a board member, yeah.
Anyone else? Yeah, Director Portbenny.
Thank you. I think for me, it's the peace. It's just the noise have really gone down, and I think the attention is more on our students, you know, the kids in the school, so we pay more attention to that instead of spending time doing things that really don't add any value to the lives of our kids in the school. So for me, is the promise of that and actually seeing it happen. So that's one of the best things for me.
I'll chime in. For me, it's being at the table to make important decisions. You mentioned one of them in one of your answers about getting a new superintendent. That was a huge deal. Getting our levy passed, doing a tech levy. These are really important things that have an impact on students in our district. And I also have kids in elementary school as well. So for me, it's really rewarding as a parent in the district to be able to have a seat at the table, let my voice be heard, and, and also learn about the incredible things that are happening in our district as my kids are going through. So for me, it's a double benefit.
Thank you. Thank you. So Matt, oh, go ahead.
I would just also add, you know, you know, I'm still in honeymoon phase, so it's, everything's awesome. It's been great. But no, you know, it's, it's, it's a really great group of people to serve with. We're, you know, we're focused on students and doing what's best for our school and, and our school community. And I think, you know, having that passion for service is just a way of just giving back to others. And, you know, as a parent of elementary children as well, you're focused on them, but now you're looking at it through a different lens of all kids. And so I think you look at what can we do to make every kid successful? That's what I'm excited about, so.
Thank you. Thank you. So then the other side of that is what's been one of the biggest challenges as you've sat in these very important seats?
I'd like...
Yeah, oh, sure.
Yeah. For me, actually getting to the point of, you know, what I like about being on the board is getting to that point. It was a lot of work for us to get there. It was quite challenging, I mean, if you watched all the videos, but we got there. And so it was that period of trying to, I don't know if to call it the forming or min stage, it was quite difficult. Our hope was that we will get somewhere where we could truly do what we were elected to do. That was part of the process, you know, to get through that phase, because we're coming out of a situation, if I would say. But we got there collectively as a group, regardless of our differences, we got there. So for me, that was, our phase was one of the most challenging, being on the board.
Thank you.
Yeah, Andrew talked about the fire hose, and it feels as though we've had a fire hose going on with this board for a year and a half now. And there's just, there have been just a lot of challenges. But I agree with Annie that, you know, it seems as though things have smoothed out a little bit. And, you know, just when you think that, you know, everything's just going great, then you realize that there are still challenges. It's just that it doesn't feel as though they're coming at us 100 miles a minute anymore. So, I mean, you know, there's, there's important things that we need to face in this district. And not, not least, as you mentioned in your remarks, are, you know, where are we gonna put all these students that are, that are flocking to this district as you did, because we have such excellent schools? It's a great problem to have, but, you know, we have to figure out what the solution is there.
And then I would probably just add on to, I agree wholeheartedly with everything everyone's saying, and something that you said about making sure everyone feels heard and listened to. It's, it is really hard, because that's something I think that, and I think I feel safe for speaking for everyone at this board table. We all really want to, people to feel like they're being heard, but you're always...
But you're always, you have to ultimately make a decision. And so you left people, sometimes being heard can be confused with being listened to. Like, you know, you, sometimes you just don't maybe agree, or you, you know more, or you know the system differently, or you're looking down the road at, you know, different considerations than you can maybe explain accurately or satisfactorily to people. So that's just a hard part of the job for me personally, is just, I really want people to know I'm hearing and I'm taking in the feedback. But ultimately, decisions get made and you're not pleasing everyone, so that's hard.
Yeah. And also, you know, I think it's, you know, I get asked a lot, you know, what, you know, like, how's it been, the School Board? And I think it's a lot of work. It's a lot of, lot to learn. It's a lot of time that you have to put into it to be prepared to put forth the effort that is required to be successful in this role. But it's really great work, and that's the best part about it. But it definitely takes a village. I mean, it's from, you know, having young family, and, you know, you rely on your spouse and your kids, and you're away from, you're studying, and so it takes time. So it definitely takes a lot of, it's a team effort to be able to do those things and be successful. So, but, you know, it's, but it's really good.
Thank you. Thank you. Last question. Pete, do you still drive the school bus?
I do.
Do you?
That fits with my last answer, which is, that gets me to be part of all the things that are going on out there.
That's great.
And, you knew that I drove a bus, so maybe I drove your kids.
I had to do a little bit of homework before I walked in here, so that was part of it. No, we, my kids get to walk to Stonebridge. It feels old-fashioned that we get to do that. But I, I thank you for your time. I truly hope that you would consider me as a candidate for this open position. My commitment to this community is very, very strong. You know, I want, I want every kid, again, to just be proud that this is where they got to go to school. Our community is healthy, it's vibrant. People are going to move here, whether, whether we do the hard work, or whether I do the hard work or not. But I just hope that, like Andrew, that I can spend the time, I can do the homework, I can lean on my support system to help, and that I can sit here with your team.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Bethany, for coming in. Thank you.
It's nice to meet you.
Thank you.
So as Ms. Cox exits, we will be bringing in Jessica Johnson next for her interview. So just a couple of minutes, if you're watching.
I did. I did. I did.
That's more network, well. See notes.
I think you did.
Load ring.
Yeah, I did.
Yeah.
Yeah. Questions on the left.
Are we going to wait till 6:45?
I have a schedule.
How much time is that?
Yeah, actually.
How much time is that?
We're like 10 minutes ahead. 20, like 25. I was almost going to do my final benefit.
So are we still going to wait till 6:45, or just bump everybody up?
She's, I'm assuming that when she's ready, they'll bring her in.
Good.
Oh. Wait.
I mean, I mean, we can wait, but if she's ready, if she's ready to start early.
Okay. She's ready then.
Hi.
Hi. How are you guys?
Good, good. How are you?
I'm doing great.
Great.
All right, so we're allowing for up to 30 minutes. You don't have to take the 30 minutes, but we're allowing up to 30 minutes. And then we have a couple cards just to kind of generally keep you on time, so 15 minutes and a five-minute warning, just to help you pace yourself. And then as you've seen the questions, there are eight. And we're just going to kind of introduce ourselves and then ask the question around the table, so.
Okay, sounds good.
If you don't have any questions, we'll just get started.
No, I do not.
Okay, so welcome. And let's start by having you introduce yourself and share more about why you are seeking this position. Please feel free to include any qualifications and/or experiences you believe are helpful for us to know.
I'm Jessica Johnson, Stillwater resident for over a decade. My husband and I have been married for over 20 years, and we have four children here. Our oldest graduated from Stillwater in '21. She works as a manager of Smith &amp; Trade downtown, and she's also an entrepreneur. She owns a business making jewelry and refurbishing clothes. She's a seamstress. Our son is a senior, expected to graduate this, this spring, I guess it's technically. And then we have two little ones, a ninth grader and a seven-year-old who's in first I have spent most of my corporate career working in real estate in a variety of, of fields, accounting to start, title research, construction mostly, handling large construction projects, including schools, and also residential construction. I've spent the last few years working part-time in sales, taking, I'm mostly a homemaker. I also spent quite a bit of my corporate career in law. I went to school for law enforcement. I graduated and was post-qualified. After getting married and starting a family, we decided amongst some, for some other reasons as well, the local communities were actually cutting funding for police at the time, just after 9/11. So I changed direction and actually went back into real estate where I was safer and made more money, actually. In school, I studied outside of law enforcement, mostly psychology, sociology. And then later went back to school for business management, just to get some accounting. I'm a learner. I like to learn. I'd probably be in school forever if I could afford to be. But I did go back to school and take coursework, mostly in business management, accounting, and things like that. Here in Stillwater, I'm pretty active in the community. Like I said, my husband, our family moved here because we were always driving here. We were always shopping at the co-op, or hanging out at the river, or the various events that are held here. I am a member of the Greater Stillwater Chamber, a graduate of their Leadership in the Valley Program. I have spent quite a bit of time connecting with local leaders in various organizations, from city to county, et cetera. I've always had an interest in being a servant in the community. I do firmly believe that it is our role as members of a community to take time to serve. But I also believe that it is, in that same duty, we should retreat and allow others to serve as well. I actually had no interest in running for School Board at any time. But I felt it was something that I could do to help community members that felt like they couldn't step forward for whatever reason, and they wanted a voice. So that's actually why I've pursued this. And I still do feel that there's a large portion of the community that wants someone that they feel comfortable talking about things that they're concerned about and have a different perspective on. So that brings me here today. volunteering. I like to build things, so I spent quite a bit of time volunteering for Habitat Builds, Paint-a-Thon. I've also done some volunteer work with local organizations outside of the Chamber, the Pollinator Friendly Alliance. I'm a naturalist. I love outside. We participate in a lot of outdoor activities when we can. I also coached basketball for community education for a handful of years. I, in high school and in college, played basketball, so I have a love for that sport.
Great, so, thank you.
Well, I'm Andrew Thielander. Good evening, thank you for being here, Jessica.
Hi, Andrew.
From your perspective, what does the school district do well, and in what areas could the district improve? Also, what is your vision for education in our community?
Well, I think most people know that we do really well in music. It's one of the reasons we moved here. I have a musical family. My son is a percussionist here. We have a, I don't know, 100-year history of doing phenomenal in music. Our athletic department is also very good. I had the pleasure of working with Bob Manning and Rachel Stile in the Leadership in the Valley Program, and we worked together on some trades ideas. I think that we are doing a lot more work in connecting kids with alternative learning, which I think is very important. I know that a lot of kids are stressed out, thinking college is the only path that will get them bounty points with their parents or their grandparents. And I know that we have a great group of people working to make kids have a better understanding that everybody's path is different. So I'm really grateful for them and happy for the work that they're putting in there. I think it's very well worth it and that we're going to see a lot of positive outcomes from those alternative programs like the trades.
Thank you.
Did, oh, go ahead. I didn't know if you were done or if you were.
I believe I am.
Okay, that's fine.
All right. Welcome, Jessica.
Hi, Annie.
So my name is Annie Pobenny, member of the Board. I have question three for you. All right. So in governing a school district, there are multiple interests and perspectives to consider. Describe how you might approach complex decisions, making, complex decision-making as a Board member.
I do have a very strong ability to connect. I, as a learner, like to research, listen, and read alternative perspectives. And connecting these solutions to problems is something that I'm rather good at. As I spent time out in the community, I got to learn a lot about the different family dynamics that we have here, in addition to the, the very diverse background that I have. I grew up in the inner city. I was a minority on my, in my neighborhood. And then I moved out to farmland as a 13-year-old. So I have a wide array of experience in my life. The, I think, not only do I have strong skills in connecting solutions to problems, but I can also offer a new perspective to the Board. I don't believe that there is one group of people who holds ownership over good ideas and that the more we invite to the table, the more diverse the thought, the better the, the resolution, the outcome that we'll receive. I think that it is our, I guess, our job as a, as a Board to bring together the community, the, the schoolteachers, the students, and work together to create what everyone feels comfortable with, transparent and easily accessible access to different insights and ideas. And everybody should feel heard so that when we do make a decision, a final decision, everybody feels like we worked through and walked through all of the options and that we focused on a common goal. And despite having differences of opinions, thoughts, or ideas, that we can move past those and come to an agreement. And I know that all of us here, we can all agree that our kids need to be highly educated and feel strongly about their position when they leave our school district. Let me just read the question one more time and make sure that I, I think that I am finished with that one.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, Jessica.
Hi, Beth.
Beth Petrie. I have the fifth question for you. As a Board member, parents, staff, and community members may approach you with specific issues. Wait, what? I think your question four. Oh, you're right. I do have question four. Sorry. That's okay. I'll take either. All right, the question four it is. Okay. On a Board of seven, each Director brings a unique perspective to enrich decision, discussions before a vote is cast. If you find yourself in disagreement with a Board decision, how would you handle that situation?
My sarcasm almost came out. Lay on the floor and kick my feet. I'm just teasing. I think that, like I stated in the, in the last answer, if we can have open, honest conversations where everybody feels like they have been heard, and we can share information so that people can have a better understanding, that's really the best that you can do. Not everybody's going to agree on anything, on everything. And, you know, that's just something that, as adults, we need to be able to move forward on. My husband and I don't agree on most, many things. And, you know, 20 years later, we're, we're still working towards common goals. And we, as long as we have these open conversations and make sure that everybody understands somebody's position, does the best that they can to listen and to take in alternative ideas and perspectives, that at the end of the day, we, we can feel confident knowing that we did what was best for everyone. You know, we have a large community, like I stated before, with diverse families, structures, and cultures, and ethnic backgrounds. And we can't please everybody, but we can do the best to make sure that a majority of those people are, feel represented and are comfortable in decisions that we make together. Thanks, Beth.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Pete Kelsenberg, and I've been to a few of those concerts recently, and I've been impressed with the drumming, and that might have been your son. So, congratulate him for it.
See you tomorrow night at the Battle of the Bands.
It's on my list. So anyway, as a Board member, parents, staff, and community members may approach you with specific issues such as maintenance, I'm sorry, maintenance concerns, or an issue with a staff member. As a Board member, how do you see your role in navigating issues such as that?
This is the easiest question. I would listen, take notes, probably keep record, and dependent on what the concern is regarding, connect that person with the appropriate party, which could be a wide variety of people. Contact the person I'm connecting them to. Let them know that I've given their contact information, that I heard a concern from the community. And then be available to continue in that conversation if someone might feel it necessary, and follow up to make sure that it was handled. And, you know, wait, wait on the appropriate administrative staff to seek further assistance from us. We're not, we're not individually a Board. We're, we would be a Board in unity, so that's how I feel about that. I think that there's always an appropriate chain of command that needs to be followed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And you can all introduce yourselves. And...
My name's Kujia Lenick. We're co-presidents at the high school of student council. We are really just here to kind of keep them in the loop of what's going on at the high school and give our opinions and stuff.
Yeah, and I'm Ileana Baylock, and we're, yeah, other co-president. So, my question is, do you feel the district has any pressing facility needs? If so, what do you believe those needs to be, and how would you like the district to address them?
I believe that we very well could have some facility needs in the, in the future. I know that we currently don't have all available children enrolled in our district. I know that we are to capacity at Lake Elmo and near capacity at other schools, including the high school. This would be an opportunity to engage the community, to find out what they believe is the best path forward. Obviously, we have a role and a duty to provide schools for the kids in the district. I don't have all the details. I'm not obviously privy to all of them. I only know the information I'm given. And with that information, I believe that a conversation needs to happen. I know it's kind of been started. We had some consultants come in and discuss with us population growth and whatnot. So, it, it seems inevitable, but maybe it's not. Maybe we can move kids around. Maybe we can find a school location for Spanish immersion, and we can grow that program. You know, we have plenty of opportunities to discuss it and options, you know, that's wide open at this point. But I do believe that there's going to be some population and size issues in the schools, so something that will need to be addressed.
Did you do the final fifteen? I just did. You did? Okay. You missed it again. Hi, Jessica.
Hi, Katie.
I have question number seven for you. Oh, I'm Katie Ockert. The board makes many decisions. Take a minute and identify a past board action. Did you support or oppose the board's action and why?
I'm going to go with a real recent one. We came to an agreement on mediation with the Director of Finance this week, I believe. And I do believe that putting an end to that is the best path forward. Our community has gone through a lot of turmoil and divisive legal actions and whatnot in the last eight years, quick math. And we really need to focus on today and tomorrow and not be stuck in controversial negative experiences anymore. We need to figure out a way to get people excited about learning and excited about being a part of this community again. I know that that's why, one of the main reasons our family moved here. And I want to be able to leave that for, you know, the children that are on their way. So, I'm grateful that there is closure there and that we can move on and focus on getting kids reading, to be honest, so.
Great. So, we're doing great on time. So, this is your last question. I think there's like 12 minutes left. Yep, 12 minutes left.
That never happens to me.
I know. I know. Okay, so your final question, this is just your opportunity to offer any kind of closing statement, and then also ask any questions of the board that you might have.
I don't think I have any questions, but that might change. I just, I guess what I'll say in closing is, I put a lot of thought into this, applying for this. As all of you know, it takes a lot of courage to step out of your normal, everyday life and put yourself out there for these things. I don't want to repeat myself. We've been hearing about why I'm running for quite some time, but I do want to say that I'm not running for me. The ideas I have on a perfect or ideal school, I would never try to impose on the public school because the public school is a place where people from all backgrounds come together, a place where the community can feel safe in having their kids learn reading and math I am putting myself out there, and I've come here today because there is a large group of people, kids, parents, grandkids, previous leaders, people who helped build this community, who don't feel that their voice is being heard. And I want to participate in the school board to help them to be comfortable in moving the district forward. If I were to put my plan or my ideas of a perfect school in action, I would open my own school. I want the public school system here in Stillwater to be a place where everyone feels comfortable sending their kid to school. I know that I can navigate, but other people don't feel like they can. So, I am here to be and to offer a voice to those people, to be an empathetic ear, to be somebody that those people feel comfortable talking to and sharing with, and that I can bring that information forward in a manner that can be communicated and that their ideas can be implemented in the district. If this is not about me, I just want to, I really wanted that to be made clear because I do think that a lot of times people think that you're running for office for you and this has nothing to do with me. So, I don't have any questions for you guys. I do just want to end by saying that a lot of the things that have been going on here in the school, at the school board meetings, I actually think are very positive. I think that there's been a lot of changes made to try to help engage people, and that's a great path. And I think that's the path we need to keep going down, finding alternative ways to get people involved, to have the community understand that even if they don't have kids in the school, that they know that those kids are one day going to be the leaders in this community. They're going to be the business owners, and we need to make sure that they all are set up for success. So, that is why I'm here, and I thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much, Jessica. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Can I get to keep this? We are about 15 minutes ahead of schedule. If, and if he's ready to come in.
Okay.
Our next interview... Are you guys going? Okay. Oh, perfect. Thank you. Let's see. Our next interview is going to be Christopher Cooney. Come in in a few minutes.
I think it's rushed.
Yes, I like that tone.
That's nice. Oh, no. Oh, no. Cute.
Welcome, Chris.
Thank you.
We know you.
Thank you for having me here.
Yeah, we know you. All right. We are going to give you 30 minutes. You may or may not use it.
Okay.
But it's there if you want to take it. And then we're just going to introduce ourselves and ask a question, so we'll just go around the table and ask questions.
Okay.
So, that's time cards. Yep. Oh, time cards, 30 minutes. So, we'll just give you the 15 and the five minutes.
Wonderful.
All right, well, welcome back, Chris. Why don't you start by introducing yourself and share more about why you are seeking this position? And feel free to include any qualifications and/or experiences you believe are helpful for us to know.
Sure. Thank you. My name is Chris Cooney. I've lived in the district for, oh, boy, 24 years now. Okay, I know I'm still a newbie, but it's, it is what it is. So, yeah, so I've, I've put three kids, well, almost three kids, through school now. My last one is a senior last semester, and it's very difficult to keep them on task, but I'm, we're managing, but it's, it's great. In the early 2000s, I was a member of the school board for four years. A couple of years ago, I filled in for one of the resigning board members, and luckily, I just can't remember who it was, but I filled in for a couple of months until the new member was elected. I am, I work for Microsoft. I'm, I work, my customers that I work with are all education customers. So, I work on a, yeah, I work every day, and I talk to districts and IT staffs and stuff like that in, in these school districts. Yeah, I've, not only school board stuff, I've also, I was also a coach and a board member of Stillwater Baseball Association. So, I try to stay as involved in the communities I possibly can get without overworking myself, right? We all know that. So, the reason why I'm applying, why I'm applying for this position is I think that the board has a need, and I think that I can come in. And because of my experience, my couple of previous stints on the board, I can absolutely come in and hit the ground running, be an active participant of this board, and, you know, help with anything that needs to be, that needs to be looked at in the next year until the next election.
Okay. Thank you.
Hello, Chris. Andrew Thelander. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
From your perspective, what does the district do well? And what areas could the district improve? Also, what is your vision for education in our community?
That's a, that's a tough one. So, I think that our district does a very good job at its core priority, and that is to educate our students and get them ready to be active participants in society after they leave, whatever it might be. If it's, if it's going on to college, or if it's working a job, or if it's going to community college, or whatever it happens to be, I think we do a very good job in doing that and preparing our students for that. I think we also provide a safe environment that's conducive for learning within this district. I think that, that, that is something that we're very strong at and we, we value in this, in this community. We do a lot of things very, very well. This is, this is one of the top districts in the state, and people move to this district for a reason, right? They don't, you know, it's, it's a great area to live, but they also come here for the schools. And that's why I, and that's why we came here ultimately, you know, what was it, a long time ago, 20, 20-whatever years ago, is we were living, we were living in Minneapolis, and we wanted to go and move to a place where, that had very, very good schools, and we chose Stillwater. Okay? So, what can we do better? I think that there's a few things that we can do better. We can always do better in this, and I think you would all agree. One is, we can always communicate with our public better, okay? We are trying to represent this, this community and provide the best education that we possibly can for our students. And I think that communicating with them, working with them, representing them to the best of our ability is absolutely a critical thing. And I think that we also, while we do, while we're very good stewards of the taxpayer dollars, we can always do better. We can always find things that we, places that we can save money, places that we can absolutely better use the money to prepare and focus it on our students.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good to be here, Annie.
All right. I think I have question three for you. In governing a school district, there are multiple interests and perspectives to consider. Describe how you might approach complex decision-making as a board member.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's always, it's always tough. And I think mistakes that I have made in the past, and it is, I go in with, you know, maybe I have an opinion formed before I even learn all the facts, okay? So, I think that as a board member, we have to make sure that we learn everything and get a bunch of feedback from other board members, from community members, from the administration as well, and make sure we get all the facts before we make the decision. I think that, that it's, it can be difficult. It can absolutely be difficult to do that because there, just because, some, sometimes you just don't, they don't, people don't understand that just because you don't agree with them doesn't mean that you're not hearing them, okay? You can hear somebody, you can, you can work with them, but you can still disagree with them. So, you need to, you need to understand the perspectives, you need to work with them to get the different perspectives. But I think that, that ultimately, it's down to the board members to make the decision that they're hired to make. And it's, it's not always going to be the most popular decision, but it's going to be the decision that you feel is right for, for the board and for Stillwater Schools. So, how do I approach that complex system, situation? I look for as much information as I can possibly get, stuff that I gather on my own, stuff that's given to me, some, stuff that I've learned from, from other people. And ultimately, I take that, I sit down, I figure out what I feel is right and what I feel is the correct way to do it, and I go with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Chris.
Hi, Bev.
I have question four. On a board of seven, each director brings a unique perspective to enrich discussions before a vote is cast. If you find yourself in disagreement with a board decision, how would you handle that situation?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's always tough. I don't avoid conflict. I, I really don't. There's, there's going to be conflict. There's, there's seven people on this board, right? Plus, there's the administration, everybody else. I hope that there's more than one opinion. I really do. And I hope that lots of different people have different opinions. You know, it's, it's, it's up to board members to, like I said, talk to other board members, learn what they're thinking about. But ultimately, once, once you've made up your decision, made, made up your mind and decided which way you're going to go, and you, you feel it's the right thing for you and right thing for the district, you, you stick with it until the point that the vote is taken. After the vote is taken, it is a board decision, and you have to support that, that decision, okay? So, you, you can still disagree with it, but you still have to say, the board has decided to do this, and this, the board feels that this is the, the correct direction to take this, this district and this community. So, ultimately, you can, you can fight it, you can argue, you can express your opinions until you're blue in the face, but as soon as that vote is taken and the decision is made, you have to support the decision of the board.
Thank you.
Hello, Chris. I'm Pete Kelsenberg, and we're looking at number five here. As a board member, parents, staff, and community members may approach you with specific issues such as a maintenance concern or an issue with a staff member. As a board member, how do you see your role in navigating issues like this?
You have the easy question. You really do. What, what, yeah. What can I do as a board member? There's, there's nothing I can do as a board member. We're here to set policy and set budget and stuff like that. We can't get involved in the individual issues of the district. That's what we hire the administrative staff to handle. That's what we hire the teachers and the principals and, and the superintendent and all the directors. That's what we hire the teachers and the principals and, and the superintendent and all the directors. They're, they're to handle the day-to-day goings-on of the district, right? I, I think that just about everybody here has another job, right? You're not living on, what is it, $4,500 a year now, I don't think, but, so you have other jobs. So you absolutely cannot get involved in that day-to-day stuff. So if a parent comes to me and says, you know, Johnny or Suzie or something is having problems with this teacher, I'll ask, you know, I'll, I'll be sympathetic. I'll say, you know, "I'm sorry to hear that. I, I don't like that to be part of this district. Have you gone up through the chain of command? Have you spoken with the teacher or the principal or the director or the superintendent and stuff like that?" I, I would hope that, you know, the board does not get involved in decisions like that unless it's come all the way up from the superintendent, and the superintendent says, "I need your help here." So we, we don't, we cannot get involved in that day-to-day stuff. It's, it's just gonna, it's gonna be too much. Thank you.
And I'm Illyana Balak. I'm one of the co-presidents of the student council at the high school.
Thank you for being here.
Yeah, so I just am like student representative, give a little bit going-ons at the high school. But my question is number six. Do you feel the district has any pressing facility needs? If so, what do you believe those needs to be, and how would you like the district to address them?
Yeah, we do. I, I don't think, I don't think I'm telling anybody here who's watching this or anybody in this room. We have incre, we have incredible growth in the southern part of the district, right? Very long and narrow district, north to south. Lots and lots of growth to the south, not a lot of growth to the north. And unfortunately, we don't have a lot of schools in the south. And this, one of the schools that we do have is, is in need of some repair and some, some extra work to be done to it. So I know we spent, we spent some money fixing one of the elementary schools, and we have another elementary school that we're going to have to decide what we're gonna do with. It's, it's absolutely, I mean, we, we have more students than we, than we know what to do with in the south, southern part of the district. And I think we have excess capacity, at least the last time I looked at the, at the numbers. We have excess capacity in the northern part of the district. I do not want to be in the process, in the business of busing students 40 minutes each direction to get to school, so we're gonna have to figure out what we're gonna do in the southern part of this district. If it's, you know, replacing an elementary school, building another one, whatever it's gonna have to be, it's gonna, we're gonna have to figure out what we're gonna do in the southern part of this district. Let's see. Yeah, so we're gonna, we're gonna have to look, and nothing's off the table, right?
Yeah, thank you.
Yes.
All right. Hello, Chris. This is Katie Hackett. I have question number seven for you. The board makes many decisions. Take a minute and identify a past board, board action. Did you support or oppose the board's action and why?
Yeah, I, well, I'll, I'll bring one up from, from the last time that I was on the board. The last time I was on the board in 2021, we were cleaning up some stuff that was happening from, from previous years, where a couple of, where a couple of schools were closed. Withrow and Marine were closed in, in the northern part of the district. And one of the decisions that we, that we had to make was, are we gonna sell one of the schools to a, to another third party to, to use and to, for, for their needs? And it was, it happened to be one that I supported. I supported selling that school. I, I also supported closing those two schools. I'm fully, I'm gonna, I'm gonna fully admit that, that this district, the way the growth is and stuff like that and, and just the way that it's set up is we didn't have enough students to be up there. So I felt that closing the decision, the schools was the right decision. And I believe selling that school so that we could get it off of our books, we didn't have to maintain it, so that we didn't have to do anything to that school and didn't have to worry about it, and let somebody else use it for, for the best of their, for the best of their capabilities, I think that was, I think that that was the right decision. It was a contentious decision, no doubt about it. It was absolutely contentious decision, but it was one that, that I think we made, and I think it was the right decision.
Thank you. You're doing fabulous on time. You've got over 15 minutes left. So this is your last question. You can offer any kind of closing statement and, and/or ask the board any questions you may have.
Well, I don't have any questions for you guys. But, so I'm, I'm here, and like I said, the reason why I was here is because I think the board had a need, okay? I think that, I think that the board has a need to fill this position, of course, but I think it would be best filled with somebody who has some experience in working with other boards, right? Somebody who has experience with the schools. Am I the best candidate here? I don't know everybody else's history, everybody else who's applying, but I know, I know a couple of them, and I know there's a couple of very strong candidates here. So I am here to offer my services to this community and to this board. And, and I think that I could do a very good job. I think I've proven in the past that I could do a very good job in this role. But I also think that if you guys feel that there's a better candidate out there, you should choose them. Absolutely. I've been here before. You know that I, you know what I'm gonna do, you know what I'm gonna say. It's not gonna change from, from the past. If you feel that there has to be fresh blood in this, on this board, I support that decision. I just wanted to make sure there were good, quality candidates that were willing to invest their time in making this board work and this school district even better.
Thank you. Very nice. All right, well, that concludes your interview. Thank you so much for coming in.
That was quick. That was my quickest interview ever.
Yeah, no, we appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll let you have that back. Don't wanna be cheating for the other people, all right?
Okay.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Have a good night.
Thank you, Chris.
Good luck with your decision.
Thank you.
Do we need the back? Do we need the questions back?
Oh, we can take that. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's really interesting.
I have to do some fun planning. Sleep.
Thank you for coming in.
Do I get seeds?
No, you don't.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Now, this is all about.
But we should promote them because they are made by our bridge transition students. So you can buy them and support Bridge Transitions program.
That was a great commission.
Pete, you should be holding up the bag.
Except it spills, so I...
Oh, it spilled, okay. All right, well, welcome. And we'll just tell you a little bit about how this will work, but you have the questions. So we have eight questions. We have some time cards. There's 30 minutes. We will warn you like at the 15-minute and the 5-minute. And you can finish early or take as much time as you need to get to that 30 minutes. So we're gonna introduce ourselves as we ask the questions. So we'll just go around and ask questions that way.
Perfect.
All right, well, welcome, and thank you for coming. We appreciate it. The first question is just to start by introducing yourself and share a little bit about why you are seeking this position. Please feel free to share any qualifications and/or experiences you believe are helpful for us to take note of.
Well, thank you very much for having me. My name is Chris Lauer. I'm a, let's see, 21-year resident of the city of Stillwater. I live just down the street on the South Hill here. I've got a wife of 26 years and a couple of children. Currently a senior who's full-time PSEO at Century, and then an eighth grader who's at Stillwater Middle. This was our school up until, up until the closure. So it's kinda fun to be back. I'm a insurance agent. I manage an agency in Richfield. Been in insurance for, well, ever, ever since I got done with college. Experience-wise, let's see, I've been on the, I was on and chaired the Stillwater Planning Commission. Currently on the partnership plan, where I'm the development chair. It was, I'm also on the Sask aboard, the Stillwater Area Scholastic Cycling Advocates, which is the, the, you know, the, the, the money behind the Stillwater Mountain Bike Team.
The state champion.
State champion mountain bike team. God love them. And a lot of those are, this, a lot of those same people are currently skiing up in Bowabik right now, where the girls just took second place overall, so that was awesome. I was also on the board of the Warm World, which is a child development center over at Bow Wells, which was, where my, both my kids went to middle, or preschool. So, you know, I've spent some time on, on different, different boards, both, you know, nonprofit and civic. So, you know, gotten an opportunity to see how, you know, that, that interplay with both organizational management and, and the public goes. So it's, I think that's probably helpful for something like this.
Great, great.
Hello, Chris. Thank you for being here. Andrew Thelander. From your perspective, what does the district do well? And in what areas could the district improve? Also, what is your vision for education in our community?
Well, I have always, I've always been impressed with the Stillwater school system. My kids, you, I think my, my kids are probably a lot, like, a lot of kids in the school system, where, you know, as long as you water them and feed them, you know, they're gonna find their way through the system, you know? So it, it's, there haven't really been many concerns academically. When there have been concerns, when, invariably, it seems like it's something that they did, so... But, you know, I've always found it easy to talk to teachers. They've always been open to, you know, learning more about the children, you know, the idea that maybe their, their parents know their, their children, and, you know, and, but I, I've always respected that. I'm not in the class. I know that maybe they're different when they're in the classroom than they are at home. And I, and I'm a realist. So, so I, you know, look for, for input from them. You know, I, I think the school district hires really good teachers. Teachers that care about education. And I, you know, I think it's, it's, it's hard to say, because as I think forward, what, what could they do better? You know, it's, that's hard, because really my experiences have been so good. That said, obviously there are constraints facing the, the district moving forward. Things like having enough space for all the kids that are coming. You know, think, things, there, there are going to be more, more of them. Obviously, where those students are housed, that's going to have to change. So obviously, that's a focus moving forward. There have been issues, obviously, in the past with transparency in the process of both, you know, education and just the way the whole system works. And so that's certainly something that I, I think is heading in the right direction. I, I'm very hopeful in that, that respect, but that might be something else.
Thank you, Chris.
To you.
You're it.
Chris, welcome.
Thank you.
Good to have you here. All right, I have question number three for you. In governing a school district, there are multiple interests and perspectives to consider. Describe how you might approach complex decision-making as a board member.
Well, you know, just as far as, you know, when I look at myself, I like learning. That's one of those things, you know, apart from just this environment, I, I like to take in diverse ideas. I like to solicit them. I like to be challenged by them. I don't seek out ideas that reinforce my own existing opinions, 'cause that's kinda boring. So I, you know, to me, that's where any decision-making process starts. My wife might say I sometimes over, you know, overanalyze and try to get too much information, like if we're trying to shop for airline tickets. So, you know, there is, there, there is maybe a point where you can take in too much. But from there, you know, I would, you know, suggest that the more, more ideas that you have, the better. I, you know, obviously wanna solicit ideas from the public, from teachers, from students. You know, I think it's important to get every, every angle, especially, you know, the more important the decision, the more important it is to have more ideas. 'Cause I, I am a believer that if I'm the smartest person in the room, that's not a room I wanna be in. I, I do, I, I do think I have a lot to learn from everybody, even if I don't intuitively think they're right. If nothing else, that just reinforces, you know, what, what maybe you already knew. So, you know, once you've got all the information that you have, then you can, can, you know, obviously you have to have a clear goal in mind to begin with. And then once you have that, I think then it's just a matter of, of narrowing down what, what it is that you're, you know, how you achieve it. I, I mean, I think we, we do it every day, whether it's which way I'm gonna drive to work or, you know, one of the restaurants, you know, you're gonna go to at lunch. You know, there, there's a lot of information, and you have to decide at the moment. And that's the thing. I mean, you, every, every complex decision has many different answers. And you're not gonna know it's right until probably somewhere down the road. You might, you might build an elementary school and then have to add on to it almost right away. Things happen, so... But you're making decisions based on what you know at the time.
Thank you.
Hi, Chris, and welcome. I'm Beth Petrie, and I have question number four for you. On a board of seven, each director brings a unique perspective to enrich discussions before a vote is cast. If you find yourself in disagreement with a board decision, how would you handle that situation?
I, you know, I'm, I'm not afraid of having a minority opinion. I, I found myself in that role, you know, at least sometimes on the Stillwater Planning Commission, where, you know, for whatever reason, you just see it different. And that, that's why you have a, a group of people making decisions, 'cause some people just see things differently. To me, at, at a certain level, more important than the outcome is the process. And as long as the process is clear, open, thorough, then, you know, if, if I come to a different conclusion than somebody else, or everybody else, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. And, and I can support it. You know, I can support the group decision, because it's, you know, I, I like to believe that everyone comes to, you know, the, the decision process in good faith. And as long as I can, I can maintain that belief, then if, if I'm, you know, in, in opposition, then that's just where I have to live.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Pete Kelsenberg, and I've worked with you on the partnership plan.
Indeed.
Nice to see you again. So we're looking at question number five here. So, as a board member, parents, staff, and community members may approach you with specific issues such as a maintenance concern or an issue with a staff member. As a board member, how do you see your role in navigating issues? As a board member, how do you see your role in navigating issues such as that?
You know, first and foremost, I would want to listen. If it's a busing issue, I'm going to send them to you. But, you know, I think it's, you know, I think it's important for people to be heard, even if, even if I can't fix it for them. But from there, it's just a matter of, you know, I think it's important that, you know, we understand the, the resources that are available. Whether that's just directing them to, you know, staff or somebody within the district to address whatever the issue is. You know, like, there's a, there's a chain of command somewhere. And just plugging them into that is, is what's important. But, but brushing it off wouldn't be the way to, to handle it. That, you know, doesn't reflect that well on us or the, or the district.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you over here. I'm Katie Hockert. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
For, I have question number six. Do you feel the district has any pressing facility needs? If so, what do you believe those needs to be? And how would you like the district to address them?
Well, I, as I mentioned before, obviously there's a lot more people moving into the south and the west than there is north and, and here in town. So, yes, there, there are some facility needs. I mean, I think, I was just in Lake Elmo Elementary yesterday. That's small. And, and, and not indicative of the rest of the, the schools, you know, really. I mean, it's, it is, it's, it's unique. So, I, I can only imagine that that's, that's got to be addressed there. We're going to need, you know, what's going to be another thousand kids in 10 years? You know, I mean, that's, that's a lot of kids. So, I think if there's a, I mean, I know, like Oakland, that's probably going to be pressed. So that's going to, something's going to have to happen there. And, you know, I mean, the nice thing about doing, addressing those things, I know we don't have a real high capture rate for the students that are in the district. You know, we've got room to get more kids into the, the public school system than we have right now. I think, you know, particularly in those areas, I've got to believe, and I don't, anecdotally, I would think you'd find that there are plenty of parents in Lake Elmo that don't send their kids to Lake Elmo Elementary or the middle school because of the facilities. And if you change that, if you make them nicer, you make them bigger, you have more, more educational opportunities, they're going to see more, you know, more than just addressing the need of natural growth, but also the increase in the number of kids that will come out of your existing student base. Yes.
Thank you. Okay, I'll take the last two questions here. Question number seven is, the board makes many decisions. Take a minute and identify a past board action. Did you support or oppose that board, the board's action and why?
Well, I, recently here, the settlement with Kristin Hoheisel was, I, I supported that. Having, you know, been around it, you know, in, in that time period and, and knowing her. I, I was happy to see that that was the outcome, not only just as, you know, because I thought it was the right thing to do, but as providing a resolution, putting it in the rearview, moving forward. So much of, you know, there's, there's always, there's always a lot of that, that desire to look back and hang on to things and grudges and, and none of it's constructive. None of it, you know, helps students learn better. So, things like that, that we can get, you know, be done with, move on and focus on the things that are truly important, like scores and, you know, that, that type of thing. Actual education.
Thank you. You're doing excellent on time. You have like 15 minutes left, so.
Oh boy, okay, I'm going to dance.
Yep, and there's, and there's only one question left. So, this is your final question, so please feel free to offer any closing statement that you would want to make. And also feel free to ask us any questions that you may have.
Well, you know, I, I think this is a great opportunity. I mean, I, I'm, I mean, I've got one kid that's pretty much ready to go to college here. You know, he's ready to go next year. So I'm down to one, and it's really just coming to the fore right now that, you know, I haven't been as involved in the, in this, this process, that, you know, in, in education, as I should have been. And so, got four good years left in. This is, I, I, I feel like I've got a lot of experience in, in, in board situations that would, that would help me, you know, be an asset. But, you know, it's, you know, the, the students deserve the best that we have to give them. And so, part of that's on me. I am, you know, feeling that right now. You know, there's, the other, you know, teachers deserve the best that we can give them too. And, and I, I think they give a lot. Right, I have, my, my mother is a, she's a para in the Edina School System. The work that she does physically, I couldn't do. I mean, she, it, it's amazing. So, so the work that they do is admirable. And, and, and with the administration as it is, with Dr. Funk coming on, I couldn't be more hopeful. I mean, you, everybody here should be very, very proud of, of the work that, that they've done. So, thank you. But, I, I would be certainly honored to, to join the ranks.
Thank you. Did you have any questions for us, or you're, otherwise, you're done?
I don't know. It's tough to ask, ask a group, but, I mean, what do you, is, is there any individual skill set or personality type that you think that as a group, you need? Any, anybody?
Question.
I can, I mean, I can take that. I think someone that is focused on students. And that understands that the role of a board, which is that governance and oversight, that, you know, that not the day to day, that that's what we have our superintendent and the staff for. Those are important. Someone that can be curious and seek out perspectives, but then ultimately make a decision that's in the best interest of the greatest number of students and families in our district. So, those are some of the things. You know, it's just anecdotally, I mean, it's nice to be able to be here and do really hard, long work and have fun. So, just someone that can also have fun in the midst of doing some really good work, some really hard and difficult decision making would be a bonus. Anyone else?
Sure.
Yeah.
You need, even, it's not a full-time job, but you'd also need to be available. So, there will be times that you might have a meeting during the day, or generally they're in the evening like this. But also talking to the constituents, going to some events, going to some of the schools, there's a certain availability there. Doesn't mean that you're on call 24/7, but it does mean that.
But sometimes it feels like that.
Allison's going to say, are you available at such a time?
Yeah.
And I would just add to that, and both, I agree with both of what, both of your comments. And I would just add that, you know, I think that school board members are sort of ambassadors to the community. We haven't, you know, you mentioned it, pretty much everyone who's come before us tonight has mentioned it, that we have an extraordinary school system here. And, you know, it's part of our job to sort of go out into the community and sort of spread that good word. And, and, you know, give people the opportunity to feel connected to this school system. It's one of the things that makes the Valley so unique and so special. And so, I mean, I, I consider that to be one of my more important roles as a school board member.
Yeah, yeah, you know, it's, not to cut off anybody else, but that makes me think about that at a certain level, you know, there, there's a demographic change that changes, that, that we're going to experience over time here too, have experienced and are, are going to experience more of. And, you know, I want to make sure we're taking that into account as we're being ambassadors for the school system. You know, I, I think that there are, you know, Stillwater has always been this small little town. And now it's, it feels bigger. You know, it feels like we have more voices than we used to. And I want to make sure we're, we're capturing all that as, as, as we grow and we plan for it, so.
I had something I wanted to add to. One of the things that I think is important is to be able to be a fast learner, to be able to take in information quickly. And as you're saying, there are a lot more voices out there that need to be heard and understood. So being able to take in a lot of information and, and then ultimately bring that to the board table and discuss it in a respectful, thoughtful, sometimes passionate way. But then also having the humility to recognize that sometimes you maybe went off on the wrong track or made a mistake. We all make mistakes in this. So to kind of have that, walk that balance of bringing forth your ideas, because we really want to hear what our, what everybody has to say, but then also kind of knowing that you're one of seven and that you're part of a team and that the ultimate decision is as a whole and not us individually.
Yeah, that's great.
Anything else?
Just be you.
Yeah.
That's it.
Yeah.
Just be you, that's all we bring to the table.
Yeah. Great. I'm, I'm good.
All right. Well, thank you so much, Chris, for coming in. It was a really pleasure to meet you, so thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we aren't really, I don't know if our next interview is here yet, but Eric, and I'm going to pronounce it wrong, Eudon? I don't know. Is at E15. If he's here, we'll bring him in. If not, we'll, yeah, we'll have to wait. And then I don't know if I mentioned, but our last interview, Allison Selman is on the video screen. She is out of town, so we'll be zooming with her.
Okay.
You know, I was coming from a basketball game for my nieces in Prescott, so I couldn't respond, but I appreciate the email.
Oh, good. Well, welcome. We really thank you for coming. So we are, we're giving 30 minutes.
Okay.
And so you can take as much time as you need. We have a couple cards if, if it runs longer, so 15 minutes and then a five minute, just to pace yourself.
Okay.
So there's eight questions, and we'll just kind of go around the table and ask a question while we introduce ourselves. So thank you so much for coming. Welcome. And we just thought we'd start off by letting you introduce yourself and share a little bit more about why you're seeking this position. And please feel free to include any qualifications and/or experiences you believe would be helpful for us to know.
Sure. You guys all know my name, so thank you for having me. I appreciate the board letting me sit here. It is an honor. It's a little nerve wracking. I don't get nervous often, but this is actually pretty intense. So, let's see. I have kids in the district, which I think is really awesome. And we were super thankful. When we moved to the district 10 years ago, we didn't actually know that. We were just kind of lucky that this happened. And the experience that we've had in the district has been pretty outstanding. I went to school to be a teacher. Let's see. I was a teacher in St. Paul in the public school district before I had a change in career. I still do substitute in the district. I don't know if that's a conflict. If it gets there, we'll figure it out. So, I decided a couple weeks ago, when this was posted, after talking to family and friends and having a reconnection with an old high school teacher and coach. And he was so influential to me. And he, he made my life so much better that I felt like I needed to do something different. Now, I can't, can't quit my job. I'm not going to be a teacher full-time. But, I did feel like what he did for me deserved me doing more for this district and doing more for the teachers that, that really matter and do so much for these, for the kids. Not just mine, but this, the community, like what they do. I walked by somebody just now that had a, that has had a profound impact on our family. And as a teacher, those things matter. So, it would be a disservice if I didn't sit here and at least try, give it my all. And I talked to my boss at work, which I was impressed that somebody called her. I was, I was, so she panicked that I was looking for a job and I assured her I wasn't.
I did too, but she was worried.
So I, I don't want to digress here. But what I will say is this, I have support from my employer and I wanted that to be something that they were aware of. Because I didn't want anybody to be surprised if I was lucky enough to be offered this position, this, this role. So I went through a lot of a process about trying, you know, getting support and making sure that this was going to be something that, not just me, because I, I don't live in a vacuum, but my family was going to be okay with. My wife was going to support this. And this was something that I was willing to invest in and really dig in with the district and try to be helpful. And so, after a lot of that, this seemed like a really good opportunity. So, with the previous board member resigning, I thought this may be a really, really great opportunity. And I felt like, for me, it would, again, it would be, it wouldn't be fair if I didn't at least try to do this and give back and try to help, for sure the teachers and the, and the students and maybe the community, if that's even something that's possible, so.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. Good evening, Eric. Thank you for being here. My name's Andrew Thelander. Question number two. From your perspective, what does the district do well? And in what areas could the district improve? Also, what is your vision for education in our community? So I think we have probably the best teachers. And again, I've had such a great opportunity to get to know some of them and be in the schools. So, what I think we do well is I think we have some of the best teachers. Maybe in any school district in the state. And, and I mean that like, I've met a lot of the teachers. I've even worked with some of them. And what they do and how they work with the kids and the students and the staff, I don't think the world understands really how hard they work and what they do. And I mean that like, just subbing twice a month is a lot, and they do it every day. So I think that we're very lucky that they, we have the people we do and the district has the ability to do that. I also think we have a great spirit. And I, and I think of that in a sense of like, you go to a sport game, you go to any type of event, and Stillwater Ponies is known. And we have a different level of pride than a lot of school districts. And I don't think that's a norm. I think that's something that was created. And I think that what we've done in this district, I think there's a lot of districts that would be, or are envious of what we have. And I think that's pretty amazing. I didn't grow up in this district, but I would never take my kids out of it. How's that? So I, I know that for a fact, this is a place that is unique. And I think that's really something, again, Stillwater does well. And, and, and we should be very proud of that. And as a parent and as somebody who lives in this district, I love wearing the stuff. I love supporting this district. I love talking to people about it, trying to convince people to move here. I think that's, that's unique. I do. And so, I, I don't think we should take that for granted. I think that's something that we should continue to dig in on. And what we can do better, I think is, I don't know the number, let's say 65% of our, our community isn't as involved as they could be, or don't have kids in the district. And I think we could do, I don't have a solution and I don't think that's fair to do that, but I think that we could do a really good job of trying to get people more involved. And highlighting what we do well. We sign kids to colleges all the time. We sign kids to colleges all the time for athletics, for scholarships. We have some of the best activities, athletics in the state. And I think this is something that we could do to make our community more aware that aren't, like I'm directly involved, so it's easy for me to say that. But we could do that and we could get the community involved in that and bring that pride even wider to our district. And there's a lot of people that don't have kids in this district. And I think that's something that we, we as a group, as a community, I think we could do a good job of bringing that kind of full circle with them too. And I think that would be really important to do. I think the vision for me, and that was part of the question, I think it's just helping teachers help students and supporting them because I'm a parent and I can really be a pain. And I know that I can be a pain to these people that take care of the kids in our district. And so I think supporting them, I think that's the community. That's helping them when we have a difficult day, when we have a kid who's having a hard time. That's the community education to me. And then if a parent feels confident in that, there's no reservation sending their kid to school that day. They're happy to do it. The kid wants to go to school. And I think to me, that's the community education piece that we have. And we do it. I mean, we do that already, I think. But I want every kid to want to go to school and say, I don't want to miss this. I don't want to miss that. I want to be there for this. And if the community knew that and we could get them more involved, that's priceless to me.
Thank you, Eric.
Yeah.
Eric, welcome.
Thank you.
My name is Annie Pobeni, a member of the board. I have question number three for you. So in governing a school district, there are multiple interests and perspectives to consider. Describe how you might approach complex decision making as a board member.
So I don't know much about much and I think that the board is here and we are here to learn and support each other. So we're going to make a lot of, and I'll say this like I'm on the board. I know that's, but what I'm saying is we're going to need to support each other and we're going to make decisions that are going to be tough. And I think that's what you were kind of alluding at. For me, the information is important. It doesn't, it's not important what I think or believe. Because what I think or believe isn't how the school district needs to be run or it needs to operate. It's what's in the best interest of the community and in the students. So for me, even if I disagree with something, let's just say, if this is in the best interest of this community, then that's where I'm at. That's how I'm going to support this community and these schools. And if the superintendent says, this is how we need to go, it doesn't, it's not about what I believe, I guess is what I'm saying. And so even if I disagree, I would say that in private and I would talk to the, talk to a board member in private about that and get information, find out what I'm missing. Maybe it's a blind spot. Maybe I don't understand the issue very well. And I think, then there will be times where I don't, especially if I'm new, right? And there's going to be a lot of that learning curve for me. But I think the bottom line is the decision needs to be for the students. It needs to be for the staff and teachers and I need to get behind that. And I think for me, I guess that's the piece that's important. And I do that already in my job. I already have that piece where if I'm standing in front of a judge and I have two sides, I have the county attorney and I have the defense attorney, I don't need to agree with any of them on a personal level. We need to come to a decision together. That's in the best interest of the community, of that person. And so I think it's very important that I'm able to look outside of that, outside of myself. And I did read some of the board member rules and I think that's really important. And I kind of follow some of that already, so I don't find that to be too big of a challenge. I don't know if I answered that very well. But I think for me, it is about the bigger picture and this board represents that.
Welcome, Eric.
Thank you.
How do you pronounce your last name?
Eudine.
Eudine. Okay. Great. I'm Beth Petrie. I've got the fourth question. On a board of seven, each director brings a unique perspective to enrich discussions before a vote is cast. If you find yourself in disagreement with a board decision, how would you handle that situation?
You know, I kind of talked about this a little bit earlier in the previous question. I don't have a lot of disagreements about much. And I think, because I'm looking at this as a different process of decision, this isn't me deciding dinner at home. This is about, like, where are we going to be and what makes sense, right? And so if we're making decisions based on a two or three or five year plan, what does that look like? How do we get the information? And it's also going to be something that I kind of have to trust in that, especially at first. Again, I'm going to need that time to trust this process and get behind some of that. And also the information piece, I'm going to have to do a lot of that and get information and talk to people on the board. I also think that, I also think too, that it's, it's a lot of private conversations that I'm going to have to have to find out what I don't understand. This isn't my day job. This isn't what I do. And so what I do is very different. And there's going to be some similar situations. But I think at the end of the day, it's trying to find out what we need to do together. I'm trying to think of something that I would philosophically disagree with something so greatly that I would have to be vocal, but I, this isn't the venue for that, I guess. You know, I don't need that. I don't need the attention of that. I just want to make sure that we're able to move forward, whether it's a curriculum issue, whether it's a safety issue, whether it's retention, it's a bigger picture than what I believe.
Thank you.
All right, Eric. I'm Pete Kalzenberg and we're looking at question number five. And as a board member, parents, staff and community members may approach you with specific issues such as a maintenance concern or an issue with a staff member. As a board member, how do you see your role in navigating issues like these?
Well, I'm wearing the board member hat. And then that means that I'm listening and I want to hear what they have to say. And I think it's, it's a public position and I owe that person the attention that they need in that situation. But it's, it's a listening position in that, in that moment. And it's hearing what their issue is. And if there's a way to help them resolve that with a, you should look at this person or call this school, or you should take it up with the superintendent because it's a school issue, that's what I guess the direction needs to be. But I would not want to solve a problem in private and think that that would be my role, I guess is what I would say. In fact, that's not even a real thing. So I expect people to talk to me, complain. I hold praise sometimes too, because I think that's a real thing. But it's more of a directing people to the right place for the issue they're going to have. If they want to complain about a maintenance issue at Afton Lakeland, then they're going to probably have to talk to somebody at Afton Lakeland about that issue. But I sit on the board and the decisions are about larger encompassing issues and not the specifics of those. So I expect that. In fact, that was a conversation I had with my wife. Are you prepared for people to be upset about things that we have no control over? And I, I mean, I can live with that. I can, I can deal with that. I can, I mean, I get yelled at all day long. So it's not the worst problem I have. But I can listen to people and I can be empathetic. And I've been there, you know, I've been frustrated with something and I've had somebody listen to me and they're like, helping me through it just by listening. So I think there's some of that piece that's really important. And sometimes people just need to be heard, you know? And sometimes we don't need to solve their problems individually. They want to know that I sit on the board and I want to listen to them and they deserve that time. And I don't think there's anything wrong with that. So, thank you.
All right. Great. I'm Katie Hockert. Thanks for coming in tonight, Eric. I have question six.
Right?
Six? Okay, good. Do you feel the district has had any pressing facility needs? If so, what do you believe those needs to be and how would you like the district to address them?
You know, I think some of the pressing needs have been addressed. I think the school district has done a good job with updating, whether it's HVAC and putting air conditioning in the schools. I think that's big, okay? I think nobody wants to sweat sitting in a chair while they're trying to learn. My 11-year-old can barely sit in a chair, let alone under heat. So I think those are great things that have been done already. I also think, and so I think the district has done a good job of utilizing funds for those things instead of, now, everybody wants a shiny new building. And I think that we all live in that world, but we have a budget and we have to make decisions based on those. And I think sometimes the renovation to me is a good choice. Okay? And I think that makes sense. Now, people may not be happy with that and I get that, but I think that's good. What could we improve or what could we, you know, that's a tough one. I don't know if I should pick that apart. I think, again, I'll, I'll point to some of the schools that have done fundraisers and had playground equipment upgraded and updated. I think that's another possible thing that we can do if the school district can't afford to do it. And I think there's ways around that, okay? And I think being creative like that is something that we can do. So I think that, that's important and I think that we, we should do a good job of that. I think letting, I don't know, I think to me, you know, technology is really important. I think there's a fine line though. And providing technology is really tricky. So I, I love it. It's an expense and I know the district is paying a lot for this. So to me, you know, I want that to be something that we're trying to stay ahead of. I don't want to be a district that falls behind in technology. And that doesn't mean I want to use, you know, that's the only, but, but I want to be able to be a community that is ready for the next phase. Colleges are there. So I want the kids in the district to be ready when they go to college and their technology isn't, it doesn't have to be equal to, but I want them to be familiar with. And I want the kids to teach me what it is and they can get that and they can help us. And that's the community piece. So I think that's, and I think that's tricky. Like, I get it. It's a money thing. But I really like that, that we're doing that. All right.
Sorry. You've got 15 minutes. Great. Sorry. All right. So I'll handle the last couple of questions. The board makes many decisions. Please take a minute and identify a past board action. Did you support or oppose the board's actions and why?
Specifically, there was, I was watching some of the board meetings and it was really hard because the board made a decision about some curriculum. And I don't, I won't specifically say what it was. That's not important. But it was a curriculum decision. And I think what was interesting was the outrage about it. And I think the outrage was what, not the outrage didn't bother me, but the, but the idea that it felt like we didn't communicate enough about it. So the community was more aware and on board. And so I think that's one of our roles if we're going to do something new or different or progressive or whatever the word is you want to use. I think what we, we could do is say, this is going to be rolled out. And I don't, I'm not saying we didn't. I'm saying that to me is something that we can, I think we can predict that a little bit. And I think we can say this is going to be tough for a lot of people. And I think that we can do a better job of helping to smooth that over. We're always going to get a certain percentage of people that are going to be upset and they live in that world. But I think what we could do is some, smooth some of that out. So, and whether it's curriculum we talked about last year or next year, those are going to evolve and change. So I think for us as a board, we could, I think, really do a good job of trying to make that a common theme, that these changes are going to happen, right? It's, it's, we have to, right? We have to do that if we're going to keep up and if we're going to progress. And so making that the norm, not a, I can't believe we did that, you know, these are things that we are, we have to do them. We have to progress and we have to change. And I think making that a normal kind of conversation we have in this district.
Thank you. So the last question is just an opportunity for you to leave us with any kind of closing statement and then also ask any questions of us that you may have.
Okay.
And you've got plenty of time. You've got 12 minutes.
What I would say, I guess in closing, I, I really think this board does a good job. And I'm not saying in everything and every way. Nobody can and no, no governing body can. But I say that not to sit here and criticize or break this board down. That's not anything even remotely in my wheelhouse. I think what I want to do is offer what I can to this board, if it's a voice, if it's a different perspective. I think I can do that. I think I have the experience in that, not just professionally, but in my personal life I think that my background is very diverse. I think my resume, I was in the military, I served, I've been all over this country. And I think I bring a perspective that's different. And I, with the job that I have, I think it also gives me the opportunity to work with very challenging people that I think have a lot of redeemable qualities. So this is a refreshing environment to me. I know not everybody's going to say that and every day it isn't, but a family member warned me that this was going to open me up to public scrutiny. And I said, I don't know what that means. But I'm in a place where that doesn't bother me, I guess is what I'm saying. And I'm pretty open to that. And I think part of it is that if you were to pool my neighbors, the people I know in the community, I have a great relationship with them and I'm very lucky that I do. I think I have a good relationship with the teachers and the staff in the district. And I think that's also something that is, I'm very fortunate for. And I've worked with that too. It didn't happen by magic. So I will say that my neighbors respect me and they would support this decision. And I think that knowing that helps me sit here and be okay with what I'm doing right now. Because I'm not going to go home and hear them say, I can't believe you did that. That wouldn't be what would happen. So I feel good in that. And I think most importantly, my wife and maybe the only person that matters in this decision supports this 100%. I would not be sitting here if she didn't push me to do this. So that matters to me. I mean, in a joking way, it matters almost the most. Because whatever I get from the community, she's also going to have to work through too. And so we're not doing this with our eyes closed. And I think that's important. My kids laughed about it, actually. So they thought, I can't believe you. And, but, but they, they're okay. And I think, again, those things matter. And, you know, because this, listen, we live in a house that we need harmony too, right? And we have to look at each other at dinner and we have to say, how's your day? And we're not going to complain about our whole day. So we have to do that. And so sitting here, I do, I do feel honored sitting here. And I really do appreciate everybody letting me sit here and do this.
Well, we thank you for coming out and talking to us. We're privileged, so.
Yeah, I don't know. But yeah, it is, it is great. And I, and I respect everybody here who, and what you guys do. So I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Well, that's all we have. So if that's all you have, we're, we can conclude.
Okay.
Great. Thank you so much for coming out, Eric. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Yep.
We have our last, yeah, yeah. And I thought, I don't know if, I feel like I could use a restroom break. And we need to get our last interview up and going on the Zoom. So why don't we just take about a, you know, five-minute break here? And then we'll reconvene for our last candidate, who is Allison Selman. And then we'll reconvene for our last candidate, who is Allison Salmon. Thank you.
It's up here.
Are we good? Okay.
I have to apologize, I'm having a bit of a glitch on my computer. So I'm just gonna just keep canceling the, I think it's gonna be fine. But if I look weird, I'm just trying to cancel out my pop-up window.
Okay. Thank you for letting us know that. We're going to get started. Thanks for joining us on your, on your trip here, so.
I'm happy to be here. And I really appreciate you accommodating me via Zoom. And also especially Joan, she's been a delight. So thank you so much for having me.
We are so fortunate to have Joan, she is delightful, so. Okay, well, let's, we'll get started. My name is Allison Sherman, and I'm going to start off. It's nice to meet you, Allison, I love the name. And we'll start with the first question. And same spelling, I was impressed.
Yes.
So just start maybe by introducing yourself and share a little bit about why you're seeking this position. Feel free to include any qualifications and/or experiences you believe are helpful to note.
Sure. So I went to the University of Minnesota. I was a student and was, I'm sorry. I have a bachelor's degree in education. And I also got my master's degree in education from the University of Minnesota. After I received those degrees, it was a hard time for me getting a position as a teacher in the state of Minnesota. So I moved to Florida. And I got a position as a Montessori teacher in a second and third grade classroom in which I was doing multi-level, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to. And I was a Montessori teacher for 10 years while working in that position. It was the most wonderful experience of my life. And working in a multi-age classroom was fantastic. So I ended up doing a specialist degree in Montessori education. And so that's my experience. And then once I had my babies, I decided to put my focus there. And now we ended up moving back to Stillwater, and that's where we're at.
Great. Well, thank you, and I'll turn it to my colleague here.
Well, hello, Allison. Thank you for your time tonight. My name is Andrew Thielander. Question number two. From your perspective, what does the district do well? And in what areas could the district improve? Also, what is your vision for education in our community?
So I think the district does a phenomenal job with communication. I get communication not only from my principal, my teachers, my kids' students, you know, my kids' teachers. But we get communication district-wide. And I think that that is an absolutely, it's just wonderful. You know, whether it's a text, it's a, you know, blast out or whatever it is, it's really good to know what's happening in the district. When we first moved here, I'm sorry, I have these weird pop-ups, I apologize. When we first moved here, we didn't know what, which way to go. People were telling us, you know, there was a lot of contention within the district, let's just say that. And, and so when we were following sort of what people were saying, and I don't think that if I had been given the proper information that I would have voted that certain way. So I think that the district really, if they could, I think the district really does a good job of giving information to, you know, why are we making these decisions? What are we doing? Why are, why are we going in this direction? And so I think that's really helpful.
Thank you.
Hello, Allison. Welcome.
So my name is, my name is Annie Pobenny, member of the board. So I have question number three for you. In governing a school district, there are multiple interests and perspectives to consider. Describe how you might approach complex decision-making as a board member.
Well, to me, as a former teacher, I really want to communicate with the teachers and make sure that we're understanding their needs. What can we do as a board to support you? What can we do to enrich what you're doing in the classroom? Whether that's materials, whether it's just, you know, anything. When I was teaching as a second and third grade teacher, I would need to, for me, it was how do I differentiate my instruction? How can I support my students? And if it was grabbing something from another, you know, teacher, great. But then they're going to get that exact same, you know, curriculum next year. So how can I enrich what they're doing in my classroom without copying exactly what they're going to do in the next, you know, in the next year? And so it, to me, it's just very much supporting the teachers and providing resources and removing obstacles. Thank you.
Hi, Allison, Beth Petrie here. Nice to see you on Zoom. And just also, I mean, if you're having problems with pop-ups, just know that we don't see that on our screen here.
Okay, I apologize, but I just.
Go ahead and ignore those pop-ups because we're not seeing them at all.
Okay.
Okay, so I have question number four. On a board of seven, each director brings a unique perspective to enrich discussions before a vote is cast. If you find yourself in disagreement with a board decision, how would you handle that situation?
Well, I just think it's really important to just have a collaborative discussion. You know, you know, how can we get to the best result? And disagreement doesn't mean conflict. It can just mean that we need to try and find the best path to support our teachers, to support our schools. I mean, my biggest platform, quite frankly, is what do the teachers need? What do the students, you know, how can we make success? Because there, you know, we're, I'm sorry. I lost my train of thought with my pop-up, I apologize. But, you know, how do you differentiate instruction? How do you get to the teachers? How do you communicate with the administrators? And how are we doing, how are we serving them best? And to me, it's just that the only job of the school board is to support the teachers and to support the students and to support the administrators who are working tirelessly to do their job. And so if we have a disagreement, let's talk about it. Let's get to a, you know, let's get to a good, you know, point. But, you know, it's all about the kids at the end of the day.
Thank you.
Hi, so I'm looking at Allison this way, but I'm not sure where the camera is that you're seeing me. So I feel like I should talk here. But anyway, I'm going to go this way, and you might be looking at the side of my head. Anyway, I'm Pete Kelsenberg. And I'm looking at, hi. Question number five, I'm not sure if you got your sheet there. Anyway, as a board member, parents and staff and community members may approach you with specific issues such as a maintenance concern or an issue with a staff member. As a board member, how do you see your role in navigating issues like this?
Okay, so I think it's a great question. First of all, I'd want to know what the pathway to getting their questions addressed is. You know, who should they communicate with? As a board member, it's easy to be like, hey, I have all these concerns, what can we do about it? But I'd want to make sure that I direct them to the correct pathway. Again, I'm sorry, I've got this glitch. And to direct them to how they can voice their concerns productively. But that being said, for me personally, I'd want to look into the concern and see how I could help, you know? And so in the outright concern, this is, you know, this is who you should contact. This is how you should address your concern. But also, I'm going to look into that. Give me a minute, let me take a beat and look into that myself as well. You know, because you're not going to have all the answers. Somebody on the playground, and just to say something quickly, Beth was on the playground one time when I was out with my kids. And I really appreciated her saying, hey, what are your concerns? What can I do to help you? What can we do? And I'd never experienced that before. You know, I came from Broward County, which is a huge county. And so, you know, board members didn't have any interaction with my daily life. And when Beth came and said, you know, I'm here, I want to talk to you, I thought that was really profound. And I would like to do the same. You know, tell me, tell me what your concerns are. But at the same time, what are the correct channels to ensure that your needs are being addressed?
Okay, thank you.
Hello, Allison, I'm Katie Hockert, and I have question number six for you. Do you feel the district has any pressing facility needs? If so, what do you believe those needs to be? And how would you like the district to address them?
Again, I am sorry, I have all these pop-ups. Okay, I think that my, as a parent, my most pressing concern is the growth of the district. And what's the plan? And do we have a plan? And are there going to be new schools that need to be opened? You know, obviously, the southern part of the district is growing. And so how do we address that? And what's the plan for that? So to me, that's, that's the most pressing issue, is what we're going to do and how we move forward with that.
Thank you.
Great. Allison, it's Allison again. And I'm going to take the last, the last couple of questions for you. And we're really good on time, so you have a little over 15 minutes here, 18 minutes left. So we have question seven. The board makes many decisions. Take a minute and identify a past board action. Did you support or oppose the board's action and why?
Really great question. So I used to work for the Burnsville Savage School District. And one of the issues there was that there was an aging population that didn't take a lot of interest in the school board or, you know, the, the school needs in general. And I would really just like to make sure that we are addressing any school, I'm so sorry, I have these crazy glitches. And I just want to make sure that we're engaging the community to make sure that we're addressing all the issues of the community and, you know, and their concerns in general. And, let me see if I have any, I've made some, I made some notes, but they're just slipping. I also think the board did a really excellent job with the new busing community, or the new busing company. They've really done a fantastic job there as well. And, you know, how it affects our kids in general. You know, they drive around on Saturdays, and I just, they're just doing a fantastic job. Because I know that when my kids go to school, just getting into school is tough. And they're just, when they can just get out there and start their day on a positive note, it really helps a lot.
Great, thank you. And our last question this evening is just an opportunity for you to feel free to offer any kind of closing statement to the board and also ask any questions of us that you may have.
I appreciate that. And like I said, I wish so much that I was there in person because this was beyond awkward for me. But I just want to make sure, like, what can, what are you looking for as a colleague, as somebody who can support your vision? Because that's what I'm looking to do. Sorry, I'm getting. There we are.
Yeah.
I want to be collaborative, I want to be, I have a lot of experience in the classroom, so that's where my, that's where my expertise is. And so to me, I'm very much teacher-driven. I want to support the teachers, I want to support the administrators. And the best thing that ever happened to me as a teacher was having an administrator who believed in me, who, but also checked in on me and made sure that I was doing what I needed to do. I was, you know, for me, it's differentiating instruction. What resources do the teachers need to make sure that they are able to meet the needs of every single student in their classroom? You know, when I would have kids who were excelling, what materials did I have that I could challenge them with? If I had kids who needed support, what were the materials that I had to challenge them with as well? Now, I was in a Montessori classroom, so I did have those kinds of resources as far as hands-on, manipulative, et cetera. That's not necessarily the way every classroom is taught. But what is available to the teachers? And for me, it's removing the obstacles. You know, teachers, we need to be there as partners. And so it hurts me when there's opposition to teachers. And because I, you know, there's no, you know, collaboration is the best way. Sorry, I'm getting these pop-ups. The collaboration is the best way to get the results that we want. You know, a lot of people say, well, we need results. We need, we need to raise our test scores. And what does that mean? How do we get to there? You know, and for me, it was breaking down, okay, this particular kid needs problem solving or, you know, whatever it was. And then I could do a small group on that particular skill. And so the biggest thing for me when I was a teacher was I need resources to do my job. Because it's hard enough to do your job as a teacher. So give me the tools. Help me do my job rather than make it harder. So to me, as a board member, that's what I want to do. What do you need? How can? How can I help you? You know, how does it affect the kids in my classroom? When I was a, when I was a teacher, I would ask my kids, I would say, what, what do you think my number one job is? And they would say, oh, to, to be a teacher. No, the number one job is to keep you safe. I'm here to keep you safe and to create a safe environment. And then everything else, you know, you will thrive after that. And so I just, teachers' jobs are hard enough as it is. And I, to me, as a board member, I would like to make that job as easy as possible, as hard as it is, because I've been there. And now that my kids are school age, it's hard because you, you see the struggles that the teachers have. And, you know, it's, it's hard to stay out of the fray. So I think that maybe I could do a little bit of good by being there. And, you know, I do have some expertise. And I don't know. I, that's, I, I just want every kid to thrive. I want every kid to feel like they belong, every kid to feel like they matter. And that's my most important goal.
Thank you, Allison. That's, that's wonderful. So thank you for ending on that really great note. And I'm so appreciative that you joined us from your vacation. So that, that demonstrates some commitment.
And I'm so sorry that I'm a mess on Zoom.
No, that's okay. No, this is, I'm just happy that we could accommodate this and that we could hear from you. And we just really appreciate the time and, and that, that this took from your vacation with your family. So go enjoy, go enjoy Hawaii.
I love you and everything you do every day very much. So thank you for the time.
Well, thank you very much. Bye-bye, Allison.
Bye, take care.
So with that, we have concluded all of our interviews. You'll notice in your package this is we're, we're not going to be, obviously, taking this up for a discussion or a vote until February 28th at our next meeting. But I did print out the standards, standards of leadership just to help maybe focus as you review the conversations we've had. So I hope that helps everyone. You can take that home. But with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, board.